All right, welcome to the January 10th meeting here at Madison Elementary School. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Ms. Kolevitz, will you please lead us in the pledge?
Pledge of Allegiance. Up in the United States of America and through the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Dr. Schuler, could you please introduce Mr. Tim Callahan, the principal of Madison?
I would be happy to. So, one, we are incredibly thankful, appreciative of the opportunity to be at Madison this evening. So Madison's been proudly led by Mr. Tim Callahan, who I'm going to let introduce. I think some special guests that he's got and give you a welcome from the host school. So, Tim, go ahead.
Thank you so much. We and the Madison staff and I just appreciate you coming out to Madison Elementary every couple of years. It's always a pleasure for us to show off the school and the students that we are so proud of. We thought tonight, instead of hearing from me, it would be even better to hear from some of our excellent Madison students. So I would like to welcome Althea and Anna and the crew to come on up. Althea and Anna are members of our fifth grade Leadership Council. Here you go, ladies.
Good evening to all of our special guests. Our Student Leadership Council will be leading this presentation, and if you don't mind, we'd like to open the meeting the way we do each and every school day at Madison, as we each take turns leading the daily announcements for the whole school. So as we say each morning, this is Althea and Anna. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Do it again? Okay, we'll do it again.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to wish a happy birthday to one of our district leader, Mrs. Murphy. And one of the people from the Board of Education, Mr. Long. And a few of our staff members, Mrs. Gatlin in fifth grade, Mrs. Davis in our school office. And a few of our students. Natalia. Eve. Jaleah. Brody. And Grace. And now for our daily joke. Hey, Anna, what did one snowman say to the other snowman? I don't know, Thea. What did one snowman say to the other snowman? Do you smell carrot? We are members of the Student Leadership Council. Tonight, we're excited to highlight the staff-sponsored clubs at Madison that help so many students build connections to kids across grade levels and staff members that we might not otherwise know. We are very thankful that our district's senior leadership team and our Board of Education has funded these clubs and opportunities at our elementary schools. So we thought we'd take tonight's opportunity to have club members speak about each one. We have a huge chorus and a great band and orchestra. We are also relaunching the chess club this month. But tonight, we're going to focus on the clubs that are unique to Madison. Hi, please introduce yourself and your club.
My name is Corinne, and I'm here to talk about the fifth grade Student Leadership Council with Ms. Emma.
What does your club do at Madison?
We're sponsored by Mrs. Emma, a fifth grade teacher at Madison. We meet with her and Mr. Callahan and focus on serving the school in many different ways. We man- marky out in front of the school. We keep the grounds clean by collecting trash before school and during recess. We help out around the school like shelving books in the library during recess. We do all the morning announcements and Pledge of Allegiance each morning for the whole school. We often have important roles at big school events, and I hear there's a lot more still for us next semester.
Why do you love your club?
I love doing the morning announcements and helping out around the school.
Thanks, Corinne, for sharing. Hi, please introduce yourselves and your club.
We are Alina.
Kennedy.
And Victoria. And we are here to talk about math club with Mrs. Hall.
What does your club do at Madison?
On Pi Day, we have to recite at least 14 digits of pi to get a slice of pi. We also play lots of, we also play lots of great math games and explore many topics that we don't get to do much of in our classrooms. We also participate in the day of code two.
Why do you love your club?
I love math club because we get to do so many fun activities that help our brains grow.
Thanks, Alina, Kennedy, and Victoria for sharing. Hi, please introduce yourself in your club.
We are Rosalie.
Lexi.
And Ben.
And we are here to talk about the Madison Book Club with Ms. Bailey and Ms. Cruz.
What does your club do at Madison?
We have over 100 students and 10 parent volunteers at every meeting. We bring a favorite book, and we share and learn about books that we love.
Why do you love your club?
I love getting up early in the morning, and my mom volunteers in the club.
I love the club because I get to share a book that I love to read. Thanks, Ben, Lexi, and Rosalie for sharing.
Hi, please introduce yourselves in your club.
McCosh.
And I am Alice, and we're here to talk about the coding club with Mr. Grace.
What do you, what does your club do at Madison?
We call little robots to move around.
Why do you love your club?
Because we get to learn new things, and it's fun to do.
Thanks, McCosh and Alice, for sharing. Hi, please introduce yourself in your club.
We are Camille.
John.
And Everett. We are here to talk about the news club with Mrs. Kleinpace and Mrs. Michael.
What does your club do at Madison?
We research about our topics and then video newscast about our school and world news. Then we share it with everyone in the school.
Why do you love your club?
I love news club. It's held at lunch, and I don't have to be in the lunchroom. I also like it because you get to research different topics.
I like to report and share my research to the entire school in a news club video. I also like the chance to leave the lunchroom.
Thanks, Everett, Camille, and John, for sharing. Hi, please introduce yourself in your club.
I'm Carson, and I'm here to talk about art club with Mrs. Anderson.
What does your club do at Madison?
We've designed sets for the winter concert, made shibori shirts, created 3D castle designs. We also made welcome bags for new students and are getting ready for a project for a local nursing home.
Why do you love your club?
I love art club because in art club, we get to do things that are way different than our regular art class, and we also get to be very creative. Ms. Anderson also lets us get really creative. It's just a great way to start a Friday morning.
Thanks, Carson, for sharing.
Thank you, boys and girls. As always, you did a fabulous job. Our kids, as you can tell, they love their clubs, and clubs aren't just fun. We have found them to be incredibly meaningful. So we really are thankful for the opportunity to have six clubs across all of our elementary schools and here at Madison. As you know, we take student connectedness surveys with all of our students at the beginning and the end of every school year. And we believe one of the great reasons that our student connectedness results came out at almost 100% at the beginning of the school year was because so many of our kids are involved in great small group experiences like these clubs. So thank you so much for funding those. The other amazing reason, of course, why our student connectedness results are so positive here at Madison are the ladies and gentlemen standing behind us over here. I want to thank these men and women for the work that they do each and every day. They are a tremendous staff and such wonderful people to work with. Their dedication is second to none. That was evident more than maybe any other time, just yesterday, right? We have lots of snow, you know, coming down at the end of the day, and this staff doesn't panic. This staff doesn't freak out by that. This staff just is so excited to take care of kids, make sure they all get home safely, and make sure they can all get out and play in the snow as soon as possible. They were managing bus lines when they didn't have to. They were out helping cars. You know, the 100 cars that are lined up in front of the school waiting to get their kids with smiles on their faces. They did just an absolute awesome job like they always do. So thank you so much for being here today. Thank you to the Madison staff for being here every day. We're just really happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan, and thank you to all who had hands in prepping the building and the wonderful food back there. Please take food. I think there's plenty for everybody. So thank you for being here tonight and for participating in our meeting. A quick reminder for board members, based on feedback, is getting the mic tonight, right? Keep that mic close so people at home can hear. Pull it right into you. You're never too close to the mic, I think, is the point. So it's from there. Let's go. Any board members, do you have any modifications to the agenda tonight?
I do. I'm not sure if this is on.
It is.
It is on, okay. Can we move number five from the consent agenda to action item?
Got it. It'll be action. So consent agenda item five will now be action item number two on our agenda tonight.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we have no one signed up for public comment, so we can move on. We don't have to read the pre-mumble on that. So we're on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Schuler.
Thank you, Mr. Hanlon. Actually, I want to start this evening by immediately asking our student ambassadors if they wouldn't mind giving the reports from the high schools. So Ethan, I think we'll start with Wheaton North tonight.
All right, so obviously, we started the second semester yesterday, which is great news for some. But for those that are a little late to first period because of last-minute Duncan runs or Starbucks runs, that means that their tardies will reset to zero. So over break, the boys and girls basketball programs continued with their rigorous schedules. The boys attended the Jack Tosh Tournament at York High School, where they made it all the way to the Constellation Championship Game, and the girls hosted their Bill Nubbs Holiday Tournament, where they placed fifth out of 16 teams. Congrats to Hudson Parker and Sarah Abdul for being named all tournament in their prospective games. Both teams will play Lake Park later this week. Varsity and JV cheer competed at Buffalo Grove High School over the weekend. The JV team placed third out of 12 and Varsity eighth out of 21 teams. Both teams head to Lockport this Saturday. The Falconettes are hosting conference this evening at Wheaton North, welcoming 24 competing teams. Or sorry, competing teams. The Falcons perform at 7:10 and 9:09. Thursday through Saturday of this week, students in Wheaton North Theater Program will travel down to Illinois State University to attend Theater Fest 2024, where Jesse Lim, an English teacher at North, is a producer of the all-state program, performing on Friday and Saturday. The speech team had a great showing at Thornton Fractional North this Saturday. Nine students received awards, and this week, the team splits and travels to Romeoville and Wheaton Warrenville South. The JV wrestling team were champions of the Oswego East Tournament. Varsity boys went 4-0 at Huntley, and Ryan Mark was champion at the Oswego East Tournament for Varsity Girls. Falcons have a home meet this Friday against Glenbard North. Boys co-op swim team will have their home meet next Monday, and that's their senior night. That'll be at Wheaton College. And then Flight and Winter Guard continue to prepare for their 2024 seasons. Winter Guard has their first competition on January 28th, and Flight has theirs in early February. And then finally, registration for spring sports officially opened up, and the global winter dance is coming on Saturday, the 27th.
Thank you, Ethan. Appreciate that. And Kaylee, you can have South.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Thank you again for having us here. Before I go on with South, I would also just like to acknowledge how surreal this is for me. Madison is actually where I started off. So little kindergarten Kaylee walked into these doors 13 years ago. I will always remember Mr. Callahan's smiling face. And I've just, it made me realize how many excellent educators I've had over the year. So I'd really like to call to the fact that these people are so dedicated to their students, and I think District 200 is extremely special in the fact that we all stay connected. My kindergarten, my kindergarten teacher still recognizes me and said hello, and it was just a big deal to be able to see all of these wonderful people who've helped me in my education career, as well as my peers. And then back to the South report, I would like to report out on the most exciting thing I learned today, which is that one of our dear physics teachers, Mrs. McNamara, had a healthy baby girl yesterday. Her name is Ellie. She was seven pounds, and she is adorable. On top of that, I would like to call out my friend Ethan for leaving out the most important sports detail, which is that Wheaton Warrenville South Varsity Boys and Girls Basketball beat Wheaton North. You might be better at football, but we're better at basketball. And I will go to my grave with that. On top of that, we have tons of kids involved in activities. I swear, when you try to get out of the parking lot, it's a lot easier now, simply because so many people are doing winter activities, whether that be speech, sports. You can see the dedication of the staff in just bringing that energy back into second semester. I will say, I did have yoga first hour, and I appreciate my teacher yesterday for bringing in energy when everybody needed it. And so really, it's an honor to be able to be a student of District 200, and I'd like to call out Wheaton South's excellent energy that we have and also our dedication to our sports teams and other extracurricular events that continue to go on all year long, no matter the time of year and no matter what's going on in our school. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Kaylee, and thank you, Ethan. Again, tons going on and great to hear the success of our students. I do a common thread right across that, which I just want to call out and mention. I think at virtually every school that we've been at with, that's done a presentation from homeschool, one of the things that they've really called out is the importance of those activities and opportunities for students in terms of connectedness. So again, I want to reiterate the thank you to the board. A couple of years ago, you invested additional dollars into some of those club and activity opportunities, and I think you're hearing certainly the impact of that. I do want to mention, actually, just two other quick shout-outs before I then move into one final update. One, I think Mr. Rutledge saw this yesterday online, but it came out in the paper version today. Great article in the Herald about Tiffany Marconi. Tiffany is the teacher at Wheaton Warrenville South who does the Intro to Education course, and the Daily Herald is doing a feature where they're doing a spy lot on excellent educators. And so just a great article of the work that Tiffany's doing, but also that program and the impact of that program as a pipeline to preparing future educators, which I think is going to be so incredibly important. So I'll send this around, and if you want to take a look at it, you're welcome to the paper version of that, just really nice article. Second shout-out, and I wish I would have caught it before I stepped out, but one of the student clubs, I think you heard a reference to Mrs. Emma, a fifth grade teacher. So right before winter break, I started a new opportunity to do a teacher shadow program. I'm trying to just get around to each building and spend half a day with a teacher in their classroom. And I launched that effort by teaching fifth grade with Mrs. Emma. And I say "teaching" fifth grade very loosely because I don't know how good of a job I did with teaching fifth grade, but she did have to leave the room for a little while for a meeting and left me alone bravely with the fifth grade kids in a reading lesson that I tried to navigate through. But phenomenal opportunity. Mrs. Emma is a great teacher that does good work. But I also got a, really got a firsthand opportunity to engage with the math curriculum that you introduced last year, the new reading resource that you introduced this year, and just had an absolute blast with fifth grade students. So Mr. Callahan, maybe you'll thank Mrs. Emma for me when you see her. It was really a great start. Finally, just a reminder, I think you heard mention of the fact that not only did this week welcome us back to the second semester, but I think winter has welcomed us back this week as well with both a little blast on Tuesday and I think some more coming on Friday. So our buildings have pushed out, not jinxing us, but our buildings have pushed out details on our remote learning, e-learning plan. And so I'm encouraging parents to make sure you're familiar with that plan in the event that we need to use it. It's a well-constructed e-learning plan. We'd obviously always much prefer to have our kids in the school building with us, but when necessary, we have that plan ready to go. And then finally, Mr. Callahan mentioned it, certainly with the staff at Madison, but I want to give a quick call out. These winter mornings create an opportunity generally for Dr. O'Keefe and I to spend a little extra time together at about 4:00 a.m. as we're evaluating, looking at road conditions. But it also has given us a chance to recognize, we have an amazing maintenance staff that on those mornings, they're also out making sure that buildings get cleaned. They're there late at night, making sure that snow's removed. And actually, on Tuesday afternoon, as Mr. Callahan mentioned, the staff here at Madison, I kind of observed it from the other side as we were with our transportation department, just listening to how that department and the dispatch did really an incredible job of making sure that every student got delivered safely home on that day. It was a little bit of a slow-moving day, but I cannot thank enough our transportation partner, Vince, for really just incredible job of making sure that he knew exactly where every one of our buses were at all times and checked in on every one of them until we knew that last student got delivered home on that day. So I don't often get an opportunity to kind of hear that firsthand, but we sat in on their dispatch for about an hour until we made sure that that was the case. So a quick thank you to them. And with that, welcome to the second semester.
All right, thank you, Dr. Schuler. Move on to the consent agenda. So we have four items on the consent agenda, with the fifth being move to an action. So I'm going to read the four. The first one, approval of mileage reimbursement rate for 2024, adoption of the resolution to begin the 2024-2025 fiscal year budget cycle, approval of bills payable and payroll. And minutes, sorry, approval of minutes, December 9, 2023, special meeting, open and closed. December 13, 2023, regular meeting, open and closed. December 18, 2023, special meeting, open and closed. And the approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to August 2022 as allowable by law. Board, is there any other items you want removed from the consent agenda tonight? Hearing none, Dr. Schuler?
No additional information, but just a quick reminder that number two, that adoption of the resolution, that is an official step you take every year, but it is also a signal that you're beginning the building of your budget for next year, and that will really kick off at your committee the whole meeting this month in January, where Dr. O'Keefe will go through the five-year financial forecast, which kind of really launches us into the development of that. So that's something the finance committee's been working closely on. So again, no information on that tonight, but just want to remind you that that's, this is kind of the kickoff of that budget cycle.
Great. Board, any questions or comments?
For bills and payroll, we had made a change several months back, adding the expense account information. I think that was ostensibly to make it easier for us and members of the community to kind of better understand where the dollars are going. I'm wondering if it would be possible, each time we have the bills and payroll on here, to put the decoder ring that explains what those are? Because both for the funds and the expense accounts, you would have to refer to notes from a meeting several months ago.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
We can do that.
Thanks, Eric. Any other questions or comments? All right, Board, I need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So motioned.
Moved by Mr. Chirpy?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kolevitz. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Moving on to the policy approval consent agenda. So we have 27 revised policies tonight for approval. I'm going to read the numbers, so just bear with me as I go through this. I know it's going to be a lot of fun. So here are the numbers. 2.20, 2.120, 2.200, 2.220, 4.10, 4.30, 4.60, 4.130, 4.160, 5.30, 5.190, 5.200, 5.210, 5.220, 5.250, 5.330, 6.15, 6.30, 6.50, 6.60, 7.60, 7.70, 7.160, 7.190, 7.285, 7.290, and 8.30. Does anybody have bingo? No? Okay. Any items you board members want removed from this consent agenda? Dr. Schuler, any information?
No additional information. These have all been through your policy review process. They're certainly reflective of a very busy legislative session last year that brought about a number of policy changes, but we had no comment on any of them, so we'd recommend you.
Thank you. Board, any questions or comments?
Just a small question on 615 school accountability. I understand it's a press change just to, in point three, say, instead of developing district and school improvement plans to strike district. It feels like many of our plans, though, are, in some cases, district-wide. So I'm just wondering, from a practical perspective, does this just mean if we're doing something at a district level, it'll have to be incorporated in an improvement plan for each and every school? It just seems administratively cumbersome.
You're going to have to give me a moment to read that one. I'm sorry, what was the number?
615 school accountability, point three, and it's a very, very tiny change. I just can't understand the rationale for it, since it seems like it would make life more difficult.
So Policy Committee, did you guys discuss that by chance?
No, we didn't discuss that, any issues with that specific change. I don't see any issues, and I didn't think we foresaw any issues from a practical perspective of operationalizing this policy.
Thank you.
Yeah, so Eric, one, I can make sure that I will get to the answer related to that. I think striking district was just that ISB does not require a district improvement plan anymore. They only require school improvement plans. So I think it's just, it is a formality tied to what's required by the state. Melissa, you have any other thoughts you want to add to that?
I agree with you completely. It really comes into play when those designations, the summative designations that we spoke to, there's a requirement that school districts have a state school improvement plan at that point.
Thank you.
Any more comments or questions, Board?
Just an observation on that. It is a school accountability policy, and all five of those bullet points are kind of focused on school-related stuff. I think everything we do at the board table is about district accountability. Just an observation.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Any others? All right, Board, I need a motion and a second to approve the policy, approve the policy approval consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson?
Second.
Second by Ms. Kolevitz. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. All right, we're on to the action items. We have two action items tonight. The first one is acceptance of the summer 2024 playground bid proposals and approval to award the 2024 playground renovations for Hawthorne Elementary, Pleasant Hill Elementary, and Sandberg Elementary to D&amp;J Landscape of Shorewood, Illinois. Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, I'm going to let Dr. O'Keefe share any background information that he wants to on this one.
The only, thank you, Dr. Schuler. The only thing just to point out is the board has specifically, just a few years ago, through our playground playbook, associated $250,000 per school in this specific case this year. But that total allocation was not necessary, just because of some of the work being done at some of the different schools. So we've got one playground at Pleasant Hill, much smaller playground on the front of the building, and then we're not changing out any equipment outside of the swings at Hawthorne, but there's a lot of site work that will happen there. And at Sandberg, we're actually moving from three separate playgrounds, compressing them down to two, which will help from a play perspective and a supervision perspective. So in essence, your commitment, when we're looking at it in totality, is $750,000. But you see, just based on the information that was submitted and some very favorable bids that came in for the actual landscape work on-site, we're far below that.
Board, any questions or comments?
Just one, I guess, kind of a reflective comment. And we've been, this is phase two, or this is phase three. This all started with kind of an initiative, I think it was from Lincoln Schools PTA, where they were trying to fundraise for their own program. So I have to credit our PTAs. This whole program that we're doing is really a parent-driven, parent-launched program that we embraced, and it's good to see these investments and, you know, the learning opportunities outside the classroom for kids. So I just want to acknowledge that.
Board, any additional comments or questions?
Just one comment, you know, about this being an investment. I also love that this project-
project is also an investment in our community and not just the students that, you know, so many families that live or grandparents that have grandkids, like, are going to benefit from these as well. So, I know we've been doing this for a few years now. After this round, how many elementary schools are left to have their playgrounds sort of refreshed?
So, the total playground playbook is a six-year timeframe, ending in the summer of '27. So, with this coming summer, you're halfway through.
Actually, a little more than halfway through technically because we're knocking three of them off. So, but I think you have six left.
Just wanted to second Ms. Kulevitz's comments about the investment in the community. And then, with regard to Pleasant Hill, I don't know that all Pleasant Hill or many Pleasant Hill parents realize that at Pleasant Hill, the playgrounds are split between the school district's playground and the park district. I'm just curious, do we have any insights as to the park district's refresh timeline for their portion of the playground?
I'm actually meeting with them at 2:00 tomorrow afternoon. We're getting to know a little bit more about that playground, and in fact, some of that equipment might turn out to be equipment that actually is owned by the school district. We have not updated that IGA more than a decade, so that's part of the conversation, to make sure that we get an IGA that's as updated and accurate as possible. And then, second, if there's any new information, which we would have to bring back to the board for further consideration, if in fact there's equipment that we're going to have to address at some point in the future, what it is and when we anticipate needing to address it.
And that's Carol Stream Park District, right?
District, even though it's Winfield proper.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Board members, any other questions? All right, Board, I need a motion and a second to accept the summer 2024 playground bid proposals and approval to award the 2024 playground renovations for Hawthorne, Pleasant Hill, and Sandberg Elementary schools to D&amp;J Landscape of Shorewood, Illinois as presented.
So, moved.
Moved by Mr. Long?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rutledge. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, new, action item number two is approval of the personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative certified, classified, and non-union staff. Let's jump to Ms. Blatner, who asked it to be moved.
I have no questions.
Oh?
Yeah, I just wanted to...
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, sure thing. So, Board, any discussion questions from the board? Dr. Schuler?
No.
All right, Board, I need a motion and a second to approve the personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative certified and classified and non-union staff.
So, moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson, second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Long. Ms. Hutchison, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, we're on to oral reports. I don't think they're... Did I miss, did I miss something?
It's a discussion item.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
There weren't any.
There weren't any oral reports. Got it. So, we moved on from there. So, discussion items. We have one discussion item on the agenda tonight, the community engagement report. Dr. Schuler?
Yeah, thank you. So, I think as the board is aware, in December, you received the final community engagement report from the middle school facilities project work we've done. So, just by way of recap, if I take the board all the way back through a good part of last school year, especially into the spring, we worked through some concept designs for some middle school improvement needs that were identified through the master facility plan, brought those to the board, I think, through March of last year. As we got into the spring of last year, the board, I think, suggested or approved the notion of kind of taking a pause from concept development and really doing a pretty extensive community engagement process around that, which we did through the fall. That community engagement process involved a series of both in-person and virtual engagement opportunities, as well as a couple of phone surveys that came to the board by way of an interim report in October, and then that final report in December. So, I think our goal tonight, as we had indicated in December, was just to give the board an opportunity to offer any feedback once you've had a chance to kind of digest that report. We did include, just for additional information in your green folders, a couple of documents that I just want to call your attention to before we jump into the discussion. First, you do have just a couple of the documents from the community engagement reports itself. So, if by chance you need to refer back to any of the kind of project categories or buckets, we've included that information. Two, I think Mr. Long had asked, even at the, perhaps the last meeting, just for some information on timeline, should the middle school projects make their way into a referendum question, what does that timeline look like? And so, I've provided for you the 2024 general primary and general election calendar, and I guess just what I want to point out on that is if you move past the dates that apply to the primary and into the dates that apply to the general election in the fall, you'll note that Monday, August the 19th, is the last date that a board would need to take action on any type of binding referendum question or public policy question. So, the 19th is the absolute date where that action would have to take place. So, again, any kind of development timelines would really need to be anchored around that date for the November election. And then, the third and final document that's in your green folder is we did not have a meeting with the facilities committee. I don't think our, any of our board committees met in between the December and the January meetings, but I did have some discussion with Mr. Paulson, who put kind of some thoughts together, just kind of based on his processing both of the report, and I think perhaps some necessary steps that we need to take that I think may be helpful in just kind of processing and looking forward. And so, I've provided a copy of that for you. So, with that, Mr. Paulson, I can kind of kick it to you if you want to just talk through any of this, and then we can open it for discussion.
Sure. So, I remember to talk into the microphone. So, I put this together over the last month or so, in reading through the community engagement report and also kind of drawing upon my own perspective on where we are in the facility plan. So, I think first and foremost, I like the communication pieces that are put together in the report. The only observation I would make is that they're not, there's not enough, I like to maybe modify, emphasize more the student benefits, the student impacts. I talked about that at the last meeting. It's easy to approach this from the perspective of buildings, from the perspective of cost, but I think, you know, in the end, this is, as I said the last time, this is where students learn, this is where teachers teach, this is where learning happens. The whole reason we're doing this is to create environments where we can give our, put our students and teachers in the best position to excel. So, I think some kind of massaging of those messaging points would be helpful. And then, I kind of outlined 10 points, but I really put them into kind of five buckets to make them most simple. First, the, I think, we've gone through this process for about two and a half years now, and I think it would be helpful for us to kind of go back and talk about our why and why now. I think that's something that's going to be important for us to articulate because there are some benefits and some important reasons about why we want to do this now. And secondly, kind of as I said earlier, I think we need to be clear about what impact we're trying to have on the learning environment, what those targeted benefits to students are. A common rephrase is, well, how is this going to improve certain learning? And there's lots of research, but, you know, there's, it's really hard to pinpoint that if we do X, you know, Y's going to happen, but there's some things we can target. There's research and, you know, data and anecdotal stories about the benefits. So, I think those two things are kind of, kind of come together to talk about why we're doing this, what we're trying to achieve, you know, why is, why is the timing so important as we go through this? The second and third bucket, kind of facility solutions funding, they kind of gravitate together and become part of the middle school facility master plan. And I think first and foremost on the facility, the middle school facilities, I think we got a lot of feedback, but there's an opportunity to go back and kind of narrow down these three different scenarios into kind of a concrete solution and settle on a final direction. I think there's some synergy and refinement and comments board members have made at the meetings and things that I know Angela and I have talked about that could be an important part of kind of narrowing down on a direction. I think it's important for us to consider the process the board will go through to review and provide our feedback on those things. And then, and then, another observation on these plans is it's kind of gone through and ranked these 10 projects. Well, these 10 projects aren't really projects or like components. And so, I think it would be helpful as we move forward to provide some more clarity and maybe simplify the grouping of these. I've had a lot of experience kind of lumping things together, so to speak, to improve how we look at things. So, I think some of these grouped together under kind of a learning and wellness standpoint. That's a wellness is an issue that a lot of school districts are focusing on, not only from a healthy environmental standpoint, but also an emotional wellness standpoint, critically important at the middle school level. So, I think that captures a lot of things. Basic building needs, we talked about the safety, security, infrastructure, mechanicals, accessibility, a lot of that's kind of embedded in the Sherman Durges and our capital facility plan. And then, every building, every middle school has some very specific, unique needs, and I think it's important to look at those to what each individual building's needs are to that's providing the students of those schools kind of a equitable or not equal, but a similar experience across the, no matter what school you're going to go to as a middle school student, you're going to get similar opportunities in those spaces. So, I think these three buckets would help kind of draw some direction together and some understanding about what we're trying to accomplish. And then, as I think Mr. Hanlon said at the last meeting, it's going to be critically important that we think about how we timeline and phase these things. It's not going to all happen in one summer. That should influence how we go back to refining the solution and some cost implications. So, I think it's going to be important to understand the sequence of work. So, those two things kind of come together on the facility side, and then, of course, how we fund it. And so, I think as we go through that, it'd be an opportunity to update the budget estimates and then equally refine kind of our funding scenario. I use the word funding intentionally because it doesn't always have to be financing, if you think about those two different words. So, I think kind of the facility solution and the funding plan come together as here's what the master plan is. And then, two other pieces that I think, I just kind of thought through, you know, a big part of this is kind of those basic building needs that are part of the capital facility plan, the Sherman Durges policy. But if we do all that work in kind of a compressed timeframe, it's going to free up a lot of opportunities, you know, and we're going to take that work out of our capital, capital facility plan. So, I think it would be an opportunity to go back to that plan, re-scope it over the next, you know, 10 years or so, try to find what those efficiencies are, efficiencies are, what kind of future cost avoidance we're going to be able to do because we're doing this in kind of one fell swoop as opposed to spread out incrementally over 10 years. I'd like to understand what that is, and then, maybe we take that opportunity to come back this summer with an update on the five-year plan, which we're going to learn about at the next meeting at the committee, the whole, to see what the implications are and what the benefits are and what that might do to our operating budget over the next five years if we're able to do this and pull it out as, as one big project. And then, finally, kind of procedurally processed, I think we need to be opening, capturing more community feedback in some way. You know, I think towards the end of this school year, May's a good time to do it. Maybe the beginning of this school year, not going to get much community feedback in the summer. So, I really think, you know, kind of April, May timeframe is going to be critically informed for us to move these things towards where we get opportunities to, whether it's the CAC or the Community Engagement Committee or other venues. And then, and then, you know, I guess that kind of covers both nine and 10. So, those 10 points, but really articulated in five components are kind of what I was thinking. Reading, knowing the time, the background we've gotten to, the feedback we've gotten, what's in the report, what the communities told us, I think we can take that information and take the next steps over the next, what, three, four, four and a half months or so, three and a half, four months to kind of zero in on an overall direction that we can have some good conversations out as a board over the summer as well as into the, I guess, maybe one meeting next school year. So, that's kind of what, but my, my thoughts were going into this.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson, for taking the time to pull that together for us. Board, any questions? Want to follow up any other conversation or topics? Mr. Paulson, any questions?
I think this is great. I guess two areas where I'm curious if you had any thoughts on how we get to that next point. One, the targeted benefits. To your point, there's a lot of, I think, anecdotal and like research. We just spent the beginning of this meeting talking about the importance of student connectedness, which ties into some of these project areas as well. But in terms of getting it to solid, you know, evidence-backed information, do you have a thought on plan of attack?
That might be a better question for Dr. Schuler than Mr. Paulson.
Here's an observation, and we heard it from our students. Observation, we heard it from our elementary kids tonight, they don't want to be in the lunchroom.
Yeah, great point.
So, we didn't really zero in on that at the middle school level, but I will tell you that a big part of what is happening in facility improvements across our county and other parts of Skowland, you know, the lunch, the dining experience is a social, social learning opportunity. Talk about connectedness between students, putting them in an environment where it's comfortable, secure. Those are the kind of targeted benefits that I think we can articulate as a result of these plans that aren't necessarily evidence-based, research-based. I can't find an article about the benefit of a, of a, you know, a modernized dining experience or a modernized appropriate library learning center, but, but those are the, that's what I was talking about when I mentioned targeted benefits to students. Here's what we're trying to accomplish. Here's what we're, here's what we're striving to.
And then, only other, I guess, question, the opportunity to model the Sherman Durges impact of this. So, if I recall correctly, we did not have any middle school work in the three-year plan, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Outside of a few door updates here and there, just for safety and security purposes, correct?
So, and, I mean, this is a renewal, not a replacement, so I'm assuming whether or not we do this work, there will still be ongoing needs. So, I'm just curious, want to dig a little deeper of, like, where might we see cost avoidance?
So, so, it's maybe not being the three-year plan, but in our long-range 10- or 15-year capital plan, all of the work in the middle schools are spread across that timeframe. The, and the theory is, you know, as we, as we look at all that work, which I don't, $40 billion or so roughly, if you think about it, spreading that out incrementally over 10 years, and the cost to do that, and the, and the impact of cost escalation each year compounding, pull that together and do it in one fell swoop, it's going to be a lot less money, a lot less investment, and it's going to take that out of future investments. And so, that as a result, will have an impact on what we do with Sherman Durges, possibly what we do with operational investments, how we budget, how the board, the board budgets over the next three, four, five, six years. It's going to provide more opportunity. And that's what I was trying to get to is if we model this work getting done, what is the, what is the Sherman Durges, what's the capital plan, and what is the adjusted five-year financial plan look like?
Thank you.
I guess, too, another way to maybe say that is, if we don't do this, we're going to have to revisit some of the things that are in the existing plan because some of these things have to be done. Right?
Yeah. Personally, I think they all have to be done, you know.
But I mean, very soon.
Yes.
Very soon.
Yeah, for sure.
You know, one of the things I was looking at, and I really like your breakdown between learning and wellness, basic building needs and building-specific needs. So, I think as we look through that, but if I look between option two and option three, you know, it, my mind was really around, well, that's really a lot about the learning, the gyms and the music and the band and orchestra, but it's really library learning centers, collaborative spaces in addition to those. And I think, you know, to some extent, we see, we see the impact of the library learning centers at Johnson and...
Right here.
And it kind of couples with the collaborative, but I mean, those are, there's demonstrated benefit there. And... benefit there. And, you know, I think really focusing in on some of those things that are in this highest level of funding and that it's not just about addressing music and performing arts. It goes a lot more than that. And it speaks to what we heard today. Again, all the, you know, the investment in clubs and all those extracurriculars and how important they are. So I don't want to lose sight of that. And thanks. This is a good document. Thanks.
I do, I want to step back just one quick second to the research question. So I've actually spent a lot of time really trying to dive into that. And I find two threads in the research. One, certainly in the physical improvement side, there is some research that connects improvements to certain like areas like lighting, acoustical volume, noise on learning, right? So when you talk about improvements to mechanical systems or upgrading lighting and those pieces, there's some pretty clear line improvement pieces. The other line that you can find is that generally, as you improve the physical condition of spaces, two kind of direct line improvements that I've been able to kind of find some research to support. One is actually attendance, right? So I think as students feel better about the spaces they're coming to, which ties in a little bit, I think, kind of what Mr. Paulson was talking about, even with the lunchroom inside of the building, that it does improve attendance. And then there's, I think, a correlative to then improved attendance, higher levels of learning. Two is student engagement. So there is some research that connects engagement of students inside of, of areas. How you quantify that, I don't know. I haven't been able to find that. But I do know, and I guess I would encourage us to think, especially with some of the areas, about how you may want to use the voices of our ambassadors over there to reflect on and talk a little bit about that with the, the board. Because again, I think even in, in my mind, as I had an initial conversation with, with our student ambassadors, and we got into talking about things like modernized furniture and fixtures inside of a classroom, it does have an impact on how students see that space and how they engage inside of that, that space. And so I think, again, kind of in, in this timeline, I think we can really think about maybe when, you know, when, when we want to kind of activate that conversation and allow them to perhaps get some feedback even from some of their peers that have spent time inside of the middle school spaces about that.
I appreciate that. And I mean, the first part, just the general quality and welcoming spaces, I think is pretty straightforward, Maslow's hierarchy of needs. I mean, the attendance tie-ins interesting. I guess for me, the one that I think there may be a subset of the community that if it's not tied to reading, writing, STEM, struggles with the notion of the investment. And we hear a lot about the connectedness. And I look at things like the athletic and PE spaces, performing arts and music spaces, the percentage of our student population that those spaces invite in and engage in those activities, I think is huge. I think there's probably, to your point, Mr. Paulson, of identifying the targeted benefits, helping to draw that connection. These spaces equal connectedness. Connectedness equals improved engagement and academic performance.
Board members, any other questions, comments? Mr. Rutledge?
We heard at the joint conference back in November from Bill De La Cruz, who talked about his, he was on the wrong path, and it was music that pulled him back into school, and music led him to math, and he has gone on to a successful life. It was, it was the music. It was not the math that got him in there. Think back a few decades, quite a few, these buildings were new, and people were proud of their new middle schools. And whether it's done now or 10 years from now, or whether it should have been 10 years ago, we have an obligation to our community to make sure that we don't pass on further deteriorated buildings. I believe strongly that that's part of our infrastructure that makes Wheaton a good place to be. And so we need to sell that.
So following up on that, that was a great point. I think part of the conversation at some point should include like how we don't get the district in this position again, where we're catching up, like really having a very structured plan and to making sure that doesn't happen. When you brought up the thing about Sherman Dirges having different places to focus, I just want to make sure that we're not taking from facilities. I guess that's part of the conversation of not getting ourselves in the hole again.
Okay, I appreciate that. I think, I think, thinking in the future to another seven people or who is sitting around this table, this is about a possibility to put them to have a different kind of conversation about what they do with their budget. I don't know what's going to be, this, the board's going to look like in five years. But if we take 40, maybe $50 million, if you think about the impact of escalation over 10 years and take that out of a need in the budget, it provides opportunities for a future administration, future board to make, have other conversations and potentially make other decisions regardless of what it is. That's what I'm, that's why I think one of the biggest benefits that I didn't even think about until this past weekend.
Thank you. And thank you for bringing this together.
Just somewhat to that point, I know it's a point Mr. Rutledge has brought up a number of times, but you know, the community benefits from these investments, I mean, these buildings have lives of 100 plus years for a long time. So, you know, there's a topic, I think, of fairness of spreading out the expense just as the benefit is spread out. And one thing, and I don't recall if it was at the finance committee or committee of the whole meeting, Dr. Schuhler, you mentioned, is that for community members who are like, okay, it's the middle schools now, but what's it going to be two, three years from now? I know you'd made a comment that it's not going to be another big one two, three years from now. We've got a much bigger spacing now. I think that's something that may make sense to weave into the messaging is, you know, this, kind of to Ms. Blatner's point, is a little bit of a catch-up. But it's a good catch-up that then gives us a lot of spacing before we hit another major investment.
I want to touch on the comment about not getting in the hole again. I mean, I think that was recognized in 2017, right? And then the board took action with Sherman Dirges. And, you know, so I think, you know, from the community, kind of, I mean, that's kind of behind us. There's nothing we can do about that except for move forward. And I think we've addressed that as a board since 2017. So I, you know, I recognize it and it's a fact, but I mean, I don't think we're doing anything today to, you know, to further get us in the hole. So I just, because I do hear some chatter about that in the community. And I mean, we're doing what we can do. We, you know, all of us that got on the board, we are dealt the, you know, the cards that we had. And I think we've proactively gone after that. And this is another step in that direction.
I do think a good example, though, and, you know, again, as, you know, Dr. O'Keefe will, will know it with what's happening this summer, right? If you, if you really think about what you're doing this summer out of your budget, so not out of leverage borrowed financed money, just out of your, your budget, you are significantly investing in one of your elementary schools. And so when you've, you've completed that mechanical system at Wiesbrock, and then when you probably come back in a year later, if we follow suit and address the floor and some of the other fixtures within that kind of two-year window, you are, you're going to largely have completely made over an elementary school. And you've been doing that across your elementary schools. And so I guess I share that just to say that's not like a, like a path to show you or the community that you've taken care of every space. But I think you can do that in your elementary schools. You won't be able to continue to do that, obviously, if we don't take care of this middle school need. So we will do what we need to do this summer. But what would otherwise be a continued path toward marching your way through those elementary buildings that you've done a really good job of getting through and being able to free up dollars to address needs as they come up at North and at South, I think you are really on a good, sustainable, I say you, it's we, we are, we are together on a really good, sustainable path toward, you know, the facility. I mean, absolutely no doubt that, you know, from, from 2014, even the 10 years that I've been here, you have made significant investments in the facilities. They are in a markedly different place than they were as a whole 10 years ago. You just need to keep that forward. But I, I think you're going to have a difficult time doing that without making this one-time, pretty significant investment in the middle schools to get them to where they need to be.
So I'm not the architect of the group, so I don't think about it as sophisticated as Brad does. And I've always thought of this in more simplistic terms of just how I view my own house and how I behave in my own house. And so, you know, we, we've talked about wanting to, and we've been very, very disciplined about it with Sherman Dirges of tackling projects so that they don't accumulate. But I think this middle school one is just one of those big projects that sometimes, you know, when you rip out one thing, that means you got to do another thing while you're at it. And these are just those kind of projects that I think we have to do that one-time thing. And I think because of our fiscal responsibility, we've put ourselves in a position where we can really do that in a responsible manner. And I think what's been very helpful is the community feedback and the phone surveys. At the outset of this, I was really curious how that would come back and had, you know, no clue. And sort of my gut instinct always told me that our community was one that was about value. You know, they want sort of good value for what they're paying. And that seems to be what those numbers suggest, that this is an investment in the communities. Our community spends a lot of time here. It's, you know, part of their neighborhoods and, you know, they want them to be reflective of, of, you know, proper investment in those buildings. So I'm excited to move forward in them.
Just a question for facilities committee. At one point early on, we had looked at some plans and had some discussions around whether any of these improved spaces could be revenue generating. For instance, there was a, an option that showed, I think, expansion of playfields at Monroe that could then be through a reciprocal agreement used to generate revenue. Based on further review, do we know if that's still a viable option? Or is that largely not viable?
We're going to, so one, that's the phase we're in now is we've got to get back into there. We haven't really done a lot of new concept development. What I can tell you without a doubt is anything we do at Monroe is going to have to happen on our property at Monroe. We're not going into Park District property at all. So, so I wouldn't say that that's completely off of the table. I think really that, that concept we were exploring was incorporating some of the fine arts improvements with perhaps some additional physical education, athletic improvements as well. And it's not off the table, but, but that's the phase that, that we're at right now.
And I mean, in addition to the revenue, that would, of course, to the point of investing in the community, give more of the community access and use of those spaces, which could be a positive.
Good. Yeah, go ahead.
Understanding this is a large project, do it once, not going to do it for a while. We want to make sure that the plans are appropriate. Can you explain again how the teachers that actually use these spaces are involved in developing those?
So each of the middle schools had a core planning team that helped us in the initial development. We've actually, after the December board meeting, we've actually worked with the middle school principals to kind of reassemble those teams and, and ready them for kind of this next phase of, of development. So really quick, quick kind of direction on, on what is, you know, items really number three and four in here in Brad's piece. That is now re-engaging with Perkins and Will team. We've, we've had some conversation with Michael Dalter, who's the, the lead architect. Really, the next step in that is probably us actually updating or renewing an agreement with them because we had an agreement to develop a master facility plan. We're now moving into more detailed design development. And so we'll need to enter into a new agreement with Perkins and Will for, for that work. Part of that will be developing the timeline to get us to, to where we need to be. So couple of different, without getting too lost in, into this, but, but I'll, I'll just kind of map it out for you, right? Their districts kind of have two thoughts as you ready for something that is potentially part of a referendum question, right? You either go to referendum, see what the community has to say, and then do some of the detail, design builder, try to get your plans to a point where you take the question to the community. If approved, you're ready to go, ready to hit the streets as quickly as possible. With bids, given the complexity of the project, and I think the interest in terms of timing, I'd like to get as far along as we can so that if we do take this to a November question, if approved, we can start right away. With that said, though, I, I think you still want to make sure that when we get to the point where you have to, as a board, make a decision on that referendum question, you're going to want to know that the budget numbers are really solid, right? You want to know that what you're putting in front of the community to vote on, that you can actually do the work for the amount of money, right, that we're asking for. The last thing you want is to put something out to a question, take the work out to bid and then be off, which means that, that while the plans, I'm now in architect language, so Brad, correct me when I'm misstating this, but, but, you know, the, the plans don't have to be in that final phase of development, but they've got to be pretty darn good that you're comfortable with the, the cost estimates that our construction managers would do at that point. I say that reasonably close to accurate.
I think in my, in my little box, I drew on points three, four, five, and six. That's, that's our architect, our construction manager, working with, you know, the facility people, the teachers, hopefully some board input. And looking at the funding and finding, funding scenarios, that's like, you know, February, March, April, May, four, four-month timeframe to come to us as a board, maybe in May or even in June with, here's the package. And then we can talk about it.
Yeah, I, I would actually hope we could accelerate that to probably have some kind of refined concept plans back to perhaps as early as March if we could. But again, I want to work, in fairness, I want to make sure that our architects have a, a hand in kind of mapping out that timeline. I want to, I want to get that back in front of the board to, to give input, but I don't want to force a timeline on the architects that isn't going to work. But, but that would be my hope is that we could, we could have something back to the board by early spring to kind of have an initial reaction to and then kind of give us the, the work moving forward. I think once that's done, the, the financing elements will come into play. I don't, I don't think that will be overly difficult, but, but we've really got to get those, the plan development a little further before we can probably fire the, that part up.
Comment and a plug. So I think, thank you for the community feedback. I think, you know, you do appreciate that and not ignore it. I will tell you honestly, when you first brought that first data set, a point of feedback from the community, I was thrilled to hear that our community valued special education spaces. I, that just really made me happy. And to that point, some of, I talked to Brad about this, some of those special ed spaces and at least one, maybe two of the middle schools, I hope that in those plans that are coming back, that maybe we can revisit how that looks. But I really am so pleased with the community for recognizing that as one of the highest things that felt was important.
I would, I would say not only special education, but how student services are provided. Those two things kind of come together. And there's definitely some, I think, new understanding and models of how those services are provided to students that I think could be reviewed again for best practice.
Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I have one other comment. I have to give John credit because we had a conversation before the meeting, and it really goes to our, my point one, why. And let's not forget that we have a, in our Vision 2026, we have an operational excellence strategy to hire, develop, and retain diverse staff. And I do believe that we're going to, we're, we're in a, with the teacher situation in the state, you know, we're competing. We're competing with teachers. And there are other school districts across Northern Illinois, definitely within DuPage County, that are modernizing their middle schools. And I believe if we had 21st century, healthy, sustainable, modern buildings, that we could use it as a tool, as an additional tool to attract teachers. Because I think that teachers are going to be coming up through, you know, the hiring process in the next five to 10 years, are largely going to be going to schools that were designed for them. To try to put them into a school that was designed for their grandparents is going to be a little bit more of a challenge. to be a little bit more of a challenge. And so there's only so much we can do with how much we pay them, but there's other, I think there's a possibility of really leveraging that as a why.
Yeah. I think that's a good point. Thank you for mentioning that. I have shared with the board in the, the past, we do engage in some morale survey work with, with our staff, and I think I've shared the, with the, the board that, you know, the, the positive, the good news is that our, our morale trend has been positive as we've done that work. But as we dug into some of the feedback, actually, very specifically at the middle school level, anecdotally, some of the feedback has pointed us to some of the facility's needs as challenges that are being experienced inside of the building. So I, I do think there's a direct connection, correlation there. And again, I want to be careful when we talk about that, because this is the risk you always run. We, we have, we have aging buildings. They have been well taken care of. We do not have unsafe buildings for students and or staff. We just have buildings that are aged and need to be modernized. So I just want to be careful as we paint that picture to say it is not as though we have buildings that are falling apart or, or are unsafe. But, you know, I think our, our buildings are incredibly well taken care of. Actually, probably the work that our facilities team has done has, has probably extended the life of these buildings beyond, you know, what, what, you know, they, they should have been. So again, that's my final piece, that I, I just want to be careful in saying the need is there, but it does not mean we have spaces that are falling apart.
So I typically wait until everyone's done. Does anybody else have any questions? All right. Few thoughts. One of the guiding principles of this has been, since we've always, since we first started talking about it, to where we are today, is this is the community's plan. This is their schools, right? And this is not just happening to them. This is something we're engaging in trying to do together. So it's the community's plan, and the community's going to decide if we do it or not. That's my first thought. And, and because of, we have a very large community with a lot of different opinions and, and perspectives. And this came out of one of our chats with the board. I was talking to a, a parent who happened to be at one of these meetings, and we were talking about performing arts spaces. And, you know, the, the question that we were bouncing around is, you know, two ends of a, of a spectrum. One end was, wow, look at the great space at Hublin, what they got, right? And then look at the great, the spaces we got at some of our other schools where, where this parent and I happened to be through, was like, whoa, right? Big gap. And the question was, what's good enough, right? What, what is good enough when you're talking about plans like this, right? And I, I love Brad's, and what I'm getting to with that is Brad's grouping of, of kind of the, the concepts, right? Learning and wellness, basic building needs, and specific building needs. And I think because this is a community's plan, it's incumbent on us to share, and Brad's point is exactly right, why and why now, which a lot of you have already talked about. I want to call everyone's attention to, and I didn't plan on talking about this, but since we're, since Brad had it in his thing, a gentleman, my name is Simon Sinek, did a TED Talk, and the TED Talk started, it's about, you know, start with why, right? And it's something called the golden circle. And a lot of, you know, most people start with the what, then they get to the how we're going to do it, then they talk about why we're going to do it. And I think, and his point is, you got to do it the other way around. You got to start with the why, talk about the how, and then you get to the what. And I think when we look at Brad's three groupings, that's very applicable. So you take the golden circle concept, you take Brad's three groupings, and you take this idea that it's the community's plan and what's good enough, because that's going to determine the size of the investment we're going to take and need to make in the, in the, in these facilities. And I think if I look at Brad's three groupings, basic building needs, it's very easy for us to get our heads around the why of basic building needs, right? It's security, it's, you know, aging infrastructure. That's easy. Almost everyone in the community could probably get their head around that, right? We get into the other two areas. Building specific needs, a little bit easier, right? When you're talking about performing arts spaces and athletic spaces, you get a little closer. I can, we can relate, and we've all been in the gyms, we all been to athletic events or performing arts events. A little bit easier to understand the why, but not completely easy. But if you get to learning and wellness, that's where it becomes a challenge, right? Because I, I'll tell you why. If I wasn't on the board, I probably wouldn't have much perspective on the why around learning and wellness. And I think because this is the community's plan, it's incumbent on us in our communications to talk about the why in relation to learning and wellness. It'll come, some people, you know, the other piece of feedback we had at one of the chats with the board was, you guys are marketing this. Well, I don't view it as marketing. I view it as having, because this is a community's plan, having conversations and engaging the community on the why around learning and wellness, because I think that's the hardest thing to understand, to conceptualize, to make real. And so if my feedback would be, as we're going through this, don't lose sight of our guiding principles, that it's the community's plan, but also the amount of effort we're going to have to spend on helping understand the why around learning and wellness. I think that's really important, because we can get our heads around, I know I could before I was on the board. I can get my head around infrastructure. I can even get my head around other spaces, athletic, performing arts. I have a much harder time on the wellness side. So I think if I were to index somewhere, I'd index on that. That's, that's just kind of my thoughts around, you know, this, the, all the feedback. But I really appreciate Brad categorizing the way he did. I think it's a very easy way for us to think about, how do we have, engage and talk to our community? How do we think about our plans? Because this is the community's plan. So that's actually all I had to, to share, but I appreciate Brad doing this. And I just want to remind everyone about our guiding principle and how we go about communicating the why, especially around learning and wellness. So thanks. Any other questions?
I'll just make a comment with marketing, just my thought. People move here for the schools. They want a good education, they want good value for their money, but mostly they want high standards and high quality. All right, as a taxpayer, that's kind of what I want. And I think if we want to be in that upwards tier, if we want to have high standards, if we want to be like those communities, and we are one of them, we have to, like, keep things up. You, you can't just let things go. So just maybe including that, or just the thought with marketing, like, we are here because we invest.
I love being here. I agree with you completely. I just, with just that engagement on the why around wellness and learning is so difficult. You're much better tied into than I am by far, right? Because, just because of your profession and your, your perspective. So I appreciate you bringing that up earlier. I just know that if, you know, as a layperson, if I weren't on the board, I'd need a lot of help in understanding that, right?
The only thing I'd add to that, if you look at the demographics behind the survey, we've got 32% of people with no CUSD 200 connection, 33% with a previous connection, which we don't know if that was two or 40 years ago. If people haven't been through the schools, appreciating that why is very, very difficult unless we help to educate them. So to your point, I, I don't think of it as marketing, I think of it as education.
Yeah, engagement. I think, I, I like to characterize it as engagement, for sure.
That's why I made it number one.
Thank you, Brad. Any other comments, questions, board? All right. We had no committee meeting since the last time we got together, so there's no committee reports. Any reports from board members?
Just one quick thing.
Yep.
Thursday before the break, I had the opportunity to go to the Transition Center. So I got to a little bit of a tour, and then the Chuck Baker, former Wheaton Warrenville South principal, Quinn Tent was there playing holiday music.
Nice.
And all the kids and staff were in the area they were performing, so it was a lot of fun to watch them enjoy some holiday spirit.
Very cool. Thanks for sharing. Anyone else? John?
I had an opportunity to go to the Washington School to hear their concert before the break.
That's great.
A lot of fun to go there.
Yeah, those are good memories, right? I just, I think about my kids doing that, it was just the best, just the best. Anyone else?
I will report back at the next meeting on my visit to Hawthorne tomorrow.
Thank you. All right, board, thank you. We have, there's three reports out there, the monthly finance reports, the FOIA report, and the Board of Communication log. That's in the posted agenda area. Go take a look at that. We have one topic for future discussion, the five-year financial projections coming up. Any other topics board members want considered?
I have one, Rob.
Yeah.
In looking through the check registers over the past several months, it's difficult to see the amount that we spend on contract employees, which fill a need that we have.
Right.
And I wonder if there's, I know we just, like, did an increase with the paraprofessional contract, but if you look at the discrepancy of what we're paying for contract services, like, if there's a way to boost that so that we can attract people to us, I think we would save money in the long run. So I don't know if we can revisit what those numbers would look like, or...
So, so there's a couple of aspects there, right? There's the, there's the financially impact, but then there's actually the, the org strategy around how much contract labor do we use versus full, permanent labor, right?
Right.
And what's the right balance, and what are the reasons for where we're at, whether it's cost or supply side, or whatever it might be.
Right. I mean, there are definitely cases where it can be supply. I understand that. But if you look at the difference in what we're paying for contract workers, it's so significantly higher that I think if we brought our salaries up, maybe we could attract more, so we wouldn't have those open positions.
Yeah, it's an interesting strategic conversation, for sure. So I kind of, I kind of reframed your point, but is it, are you thinking more about the balance, or you want the hardcore numbers? I didn't mean to take you off your point.
Discussion of, you know, can we look at
Yeah.
increasing or
Okay.
what we can do to attract and not have to use so many contract workers.
All right. Great. Anyone else?
Question before I nominate something as a topic. So I know we have transportation contracts coming up as a, a big item in the future. Dr. Schuler, can you remind me of the timeline on that?
Dr. O'Keefe?
We have our initial two-year numbers back from each of our major carriers, so Illinois Central, who Dr. Schuler referred to earlier, and Sunrise. So Illinois Central is your transportation company that does all of your regular education plus special ed in-house, and then Sunrise, which does special ed out of district. We're not comfortable with those numbers and bringing those numbers to a conversation at the board table yet, so we're negotiating with each of those areas. And I'm even looking into doing something that is not traditionally done inside of a public school district to help further reduce costs that we may bring to a conversation in the future. Ideally, I'd love to have it in front of you in February, but we don't need to rush it, because our contracts are actually not up until June 30th. So I would say within the next few months, we should be ready to have a conversation with you about where we believe we can or should be moving forward.
Okay, so part of the reason I asked the question is just so we don't lose time to have meaningful discussion around something that's such a big expense. The second reason I posed the question, similar to where Ms. Blatner was looking through the check register, at kind of make versus buy decisions of contractors versus non, I'm always shocked by the transportation expense for transportation of individual students to outplacement and various things. I have seen some neighboring districts move to alternative approaches to that, whether it's running their own fleet of transportation or using busing companies for that. And I just wonder if there's an opportunity to have a look at and a discussion around whether there are any feasible options to mitigate that expense. And if you have an immediate reaction, that's great, but otherwise, I would suggest maybe it's something we talk about in the future.
Sure.
The only immediate thing I would say, Eric, is every single opportunity that we have to use a bus through a contract, we use. The challenge is the number of available bus drivers, and our triple stack busing regiment that we have in the morning and the afternoon really limits the number of opportunities that we have to use for out-of-district placement in that specific case. And then again, that's all Sunrise for out-of-district, but I can tell you, there are points, and there are too many points, which is why we're looking at expanding all of the opportunities that we have. There are literally three special ed busing companies in the area, maybe a fourth. We've approached every one of them. The challenge every single time is access to drivers in the timeframe that we need to make sure we can get our kids to school for a full day of education.
And that may be why some other districts are insourcing, and I would have said if you'd asked me six months ago, would a school district ever want to be in a busing business? Heck, no. But it just caused me pause when I see how many districts are starting to make that, that choice. So that's why I would nominate that one as a future discussion. Thank you.
And I can certainly tell you, Eric and the rest of the board, we, so 203 is in-house. 204 is, is not. I continue to open up dialogue, and the unit group meets my, my units, the CFOs, we get together at the end of this month. Any chance we have to talk about cooperative purchasing and building cooperatives, I think it's better for public education in general. Like what you mentioned, I am not sure that any of us want to get into bus business as a whole, but if there's an opportunity that leverages resources and saves dollars, it's up for grabs, as far as I'm concerned.
Can I just add, as part of that discussion, I am curious, and this can be part of what you bring back, do we ever offer parents of outsourced students the opportunity to be reimbursed to transport their children?
Yes.
Is that like a first thing that we?
It's not a first thing that, that we do, but, but it is definitely, it is something that is utilized. So it's kind of often situation-specific, based on where we're taking kind of the situation, but it is used.
Thank you.
Any other topics for future discussion, board? All right. Our next regular meeting is February 14th at 7:00, and we'll be at Monroe Middle School. And then our next committee of the whole meeting is on January 24th at the School Service Center. So there being no further action to come before the board, no open session. Board, I need a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jerpy. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The meeting's adjourned. Thank you.